In attendance?
In attendance. Super dip.
Okay, uh, of course the lagoon's not flowed for a little while. It's kind of an algae out there. Days that the wind blows, it looks pretty good, but uh, the P's level is still pretty high, other than that. Any other issues? We got a Thursday month, we need to get sprayed here pretty well. Don't know if there'll be any other problems?
Yeah.
I don't think we've got any problems on that yet, so. But it's, you know, it goes like this every year. It gets a lot of algae in it and then it raises the P's level. It's gonna have hot sun or hot temperatures to, for, doesn't make sure to help cure that, which we haven't had great amounts yet, so. Hopefully. Straighten the bank, straightens up like it usually does and we don't have to do anything different. We never have yet, but we're just first.
Okay. Does anybody have all that?
Yes. So, anybody got any questions?
Everybody go through the last month's meeting minutes?
Pretty pages.
Yeah.
I read the first page, I'll read, I'll read them later. I didn't come down here to read a book.
That's about what it is. I tried to just hit the highlights, I could have made five.
I was here though.
I know you was, yep, yep, yep.
Anybody have additions or corrections to that?
I do. When we talked about that forty-three dollars being off in the previous month, you, you kinda have it backwards here in the minutes. Uh, the actual deposit was forty-three dollars less than the syrupies.
It was forty-three dollars more for March. It was forty-three dollars less for February.
I'll go back and check.
I went back.
I'll go back and check.
I went back and cur- and what happened was the deposit began from the syrupies versus what was put in the bank was short forty-three dollars because there was two people, Kevin Kinsler and Gary Sykes. Kevin paid twenty dollars after the fifteen, fifteen or sixteen, those after all the other checks he did in. And Gary Sykes paid late in the month, so those two, that cash did not get put to bank that month.
Until the following month.
Till the following month, that's why the following month I was forty-three dollars more. And the, and the previous month was forty, minus forty-three dollars.
Got it.
So I corrected that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. About bills. Here's a, here's a bill that's, someone that's already in. Someone that taught him that and uh.
But you went ahead and paid these anyway before we see them, right? That's what you did?
No, well, they wrote the checkbook that you're not sent out.
I, well, that's good.
Yeah, I mean, no one.
So we can approve them and we're not actually go through that process.
Right, and, and all the, all the.
Thank you very much.
The ones that are on the, the ones that are listed. The only ones that's been paid is the Marplane Bill, which is Otto.
Right.
Uh, Lewis County and Waterville has been sent, but the rest of them were in the checkbooks. Still, nothing else has been, nothing else has been sent.
And you mowed the school three times and uh.
Three times.
And just once on the doomed?
Once.
Well, yeah, uh, it's only getting some some uh.
Yeah.
It's bad.
I was gonna say, probably won't get it this month.
It's bad.
But I didn't, I didn't mow, I didn't mow.
The rest is dead.
I didn't mow the school.
Anybody?
I didn't mow the school last week. Uh, because, because of the weather and I don't know, it needs to rain because the poor really know again, so. Anybody, unless anybody's got any objections on, on that?
What is, you got Hawkins Insurance Bill in there?
Oh, oh, no, no, look, 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 sorry. This is Hawkins. And that's the paper that has to be sent back to Hawkins.
I have it. Jason goes on?
So, so he can approve those when Hawkins is buying Eric?
It's not sent to, no, it's, it's not sent to him. It went up.
Do I have that?
No, it, last year was fourteen thirty-six, or fourteen thirty-one, this year it's fifteen thirty-seven.
Good.
Thank you.
They remember here, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember, I remember what much.
Oh.
At all?
Didn't use me.
Didn't that change handles or?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I agree with that. But it don't matter, I went to another lady, it's the exact same price, because it's commercial business, for, for what it is, there's no, again, do you want it? You know what I'm saying?
No. Yeah.
I try, I.
Yeah, and I looked into it last year too, about calling some, I called some places and it didn't, it didn't matter, it was the same.
Uh, motion to pay the bills? I'll make the motion.
Okay, Chris makes a motion to pay the bills.
All favorit.
Susan second. You all in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody in favor?
Financial report. Kinda went through that. With the bills. Make a walk, kinda run along their interests.
Yes.
Everybody make the financial statement? Motion to approve them?
I have a question. You know, you have a question. Um, I'm, I'm still seeing that A R P A lead in the street fund. Shouldn't that be in the general fund?
Well.
Maybe it's, can't use the streets, just that.
I mean, it was put in there because that way it's, not, not much activity goes on out of the street fund every year.
Yeah.
So it's just easier to keep track of it, I guess.
Uh, but if it is used for like storm sewer stuff, it really needs to be out of the street fund instead of the bill.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, that can always be moved when we decide what the stone running.
Yeah, I mean, it could be whatever. Yeah, whatever everybody decides to do.
I mean, I don't know, I asked about which fund it could be put in and it said, and then they gave me the.
As long as you're keeping it separate from the side.
Yeah, I think we put it in there, just like Rex said, just we put it in there because there's not hardly no activity comes out of the street fund. We was all sitting here that night, Jason, he was on the phone.
Yeah.
Phone, phone conference with us all.
Uh, I didn't see it in the minutes, that's what I was asking.
Oh, that's been, that's been a long time ago. There we go, there we first, there we first got it.
Been back in twenty-one.
It's in there somewhere.
I'm pretty sure, because we.
Maybe something out there.
I'm pretty sure that I took a, took all this stuff before and it was in there. But I remember seeing it.
Look.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the financial statement. I'll make the motion to approve the financial statement.
Nick makes motion to approve the financial.
Second.
Awesome. Darren seconds?
All favorit.
All favorit?
Fine.
All favorit. Motion favorit.
Court.
Hell, I get it early, I guess, partly, uh, closed in the back of the, I've been down to lawyer's office wise, get paper down there on the compliance. So, and they're working on that, because they had to copy everything and it's gonna make me forever get it copied, so.
I'm not gonna pay that P's.
Well, I understand that.
Okay. I'm here.
But I think, I think she had a chance to do.
She should.
Yeah, but they're just trying to help us get things done because the way I would have had to done it was gonna just take a trench right there or something, just. And they got the big scanner down there and they figured it all at once.
Good.
So I hadn't heard anything back, I was down there. About a week ago, took all the paperwork down there, maybe it's a little longer than that, I gotta prove down.
What about audio recordings?
Haven't done anything on that. I don't know, say about that.
Is there, yeah, some of the, you have a C D drive on the laptop? City laptop? I should probably make that up for you in that.
What's that?
Upgrading the laptop.
They don't have the C D drive anymore.
Sure, but just ask for one.
Come on, man.
As long as you don't go to Walmart. Did you?
Well, I should unwatch, there's anyone available, so, about once I read it, find external for my personal. Uh, the thirtieth is when I took that, so. So, I don't have anything else other than the. Bump the files and.
I'm not, what can I, what can you back?
I mean, most of the reports is in the minutes anyway.
Most of it, yeah.
So I haven't done anything extra except for got this back and. And did the, found the problem and, that's Jordan's, we got the files, put down files and that's about it.
How about, uh, the accounts receivable balance at the end of the month, what was that? At the last month?
Accounts due.
All the money that people owe the city, just the number total?
I didn't do that. Nobody agreed that I needed to do that.
Well, I don't, I don't know, we had to vote on and agree with it. I asked for like, those numbers for four months now, accounts receivable and how much did you bill last month? Those should be very easy for you to view with the average and the front end. Is there a reason you're not taking them to me?
I mean, you just take the extra time, it costs you city more money.
To add up the total when you're done billing? To, to look at how much people owe and write the number down?
If you send out at a month, you're a customer.
Uh-huh. And you're leaving a big part of the accounting equation off the table and asking for how much does the city need to collect from people and how much did you bill last month? You don't know?
I don't, no, I don't make none of that, no, I don't.
So every month, and you know I'm gonna ask you for it, you don't know every month?
Because nobody's ever done it before.
I, I'm pretty sure somebody's told me that, uh, and I'm sure that somebody knows how much people owe. I'm sure that's, that's happened.
There's a record of it in the service.
And what is that?
I don't know, because I don't figure it out every month.
You just don't know? You really don't know?
I don't figure it out, so I don't know. I write the, the amount on each individual postcard and.
And you don't have it up?
I don't have it up, no. I never have. In the previous works, never had either.
Oh, I bet I could find places where they have, because that's just crazy that you can't give your number.
Well, there's only, well, there's the other option, you get somebody else to do it.
That's true, we can.
That's right, we can.
We can also get a state auditor in here to find out that number. I'm just asking, I deserve to have that answer. You may not answer that as a public person, but I'm here in a board of trustees and I'm trying to do my best job and I cannot do that without those numbers. And I've asked you more than once. And so you're just basically saying you're not gonna do it?
I haven't said that, but I don't have the amount now.
That's not an answer.
That should be the board's decision.
Why would it be the board's decision? Wait, this is not, it's everybody's money here that we're dealing with and you should be able to give us that so we can make decisions based on those numbers.
Though, the amount for the back taxes or back surbills for last year is in the minutes, previous minutes, it's thirty-nine hundred fifty dollars. Plus, there's sixty accounts, times eighteen, that's thousand eighty dollars a month.
Uh-huh. And, that's not what we bill because people pay by the year.
That's exactly right.
Um, that does not include late fees that, that's why I'm asking you those, about those numbers.
Is it required over?
By who?
Is it required in this, that sunshine law to do that? To relinquish that information?
I don't know.
I mean, I'm.
It's not, that is not a sunshine law request and that's not the only rules and regulations that we have to go by.
I understand that, but you can't, you can't.
I cannot make an accounting decision without those two numbers.
But you can't figure out what gets brought in every month according to, or what's on the paperwork and then we have, you said sixty tanks. If you go back through the minutes, you can see who has paid for the year and who pays for the mess.
I'm not asking about who paid for the year. What is the balance at the end of the month, who owes us money, period, what's the number? How much money did you bill? Did you bill, you know, ten dollars in late fees on top of the eighteen dollars that you billed and, or thirty-six dollars or whatever it is? Why is that so hard?
What are you gonna do with the money once you get it?
I'm gonna try to come up with a tentative budget for us so we know how much money we can expect to actually collect over a period of time.
That's all in financials.
That's all in the financials.
It is not in the financials.
People that don't pay, they're gonna continue to not, yeah.
That's not true, they're collected by the Knox County Collector.
I'm sure they pay them too.
Well, they will if they wanna try this way.
If we do that, it'll leave them angry, yeah.
Yeah. And so we're gonna talk about one exception, two exceptions? What, why can't you give me that number, Greg?
You think, I mean, you act like all this stuff doesn't take any time, it does, I'm, I'm part time.
Uh, well, I, I did that, you know.
Well, you're trying to impose big city BS on a little town.
I don't think so.
The, the town is operating in the black, which is very rare. They've been self-sufficient for all these years, all these people have worked to make this town what it is.
And I ask a simple question and you can't give me the answer?
And you're not asking a simple question.
It's your job.
Well.
It's your job, you get paid and the city pays you to do that job.
But why wasn't it done for all these other years?
Well, because maybe they didn't have an accountant as a trustee. Maybe they didn't have somebody that knew something about this. Your guess is as good as mine. That should not be a secret.
It's not a secret.
Well, it must be.
I had no idea unless I figured it out, because.
Well, can you do that, because we, we pay you, we'll pay you to do that. Right, take it by now.
If nobody has any objections, I guess I'll pull it.
Don't worry.
But, the only thing I have is that it's all in black and white, got so many units.
Nope.
And we can't use common math to figure it out?
That's not what it is.
Can't you figure it itself?
When I have those numbers, I will, and I'll keep track of it every month. I certainly can. And it won't take me out either.
Pardon me?
It won't take me out either.
Like you said, we don't have that knowledge.
Exactly. We don't, I do, and all he has to do is total up the number and he knows that, but for some reason he doesn't wanna give up that information. Which makes me question more.
I don't think the.
Tell me a good reason why I shouldn't have that. Tell me one good reason why you can't, why I shouldn't have it.
I'm just saying it wasn't, hasn't ever been done before, and that's all I'm gonna say about it, I'm not gonna sit here and argue about it.
Neither am I.
Well, it sounds like you are.
Well, no, I'll just take it further, if that's the way you wanna do it, that's the way I'll do it. I'm giving you an opportunity to speak up, why don't you fix the problem?
I said, I will do it. Unless there was any objections.
No objection.
All right.
Thank you.
Any old business?
That was a little business.
I'm gonna tell them.
That's your business?
Yeah, no, it's all of our business.
No, I thought you was only talking about it.
Yeah.
The way you've been doing it thirty years, not good enough to you?
No, because it goes against some state laws and regulations, that's not good enough for me. I promised people that I wouldn't do that and I was making sure that we didn't do that and I'm just trying to get this thing straight.
Of course you are.
That's all.
Of course you are.
Of course I am. You don't know me, you don't know.
I'm lucky. Stop. That's it.
New business? Karen, you want any new business?
Yes. I have a question. Who is your city lawyer?
George, uh, Jordan Forrest.
Jordan?
Yep, F O R C E.
Man or woman?
Woman.
Woman. Okay, where is she from?
North Shelby.
Okay. Okay, I'm here for, I guess, two things, since I've heard some of this. Uh, first of all, what are you doing, what are you going to do about the mess over at Jim Perkins' house?
And snooping birds and everywhere else.
What are you doing?
Uh, working on it.
What?
Well, we're in the middle of, we switched sheriffs again.
Who's up there now?
Carl Kanon.
Carl Kanon?
Well, yeah.
So now we're having to get all that worked out to where he can serve papers for us so we can prosecute.
I have been to the health department.
Yeah.
Uh, they are supposed to come down, I think next week, and look at this mess. You know, it's summertime, the flies are, did you ever think about the flies that hatch over there and then they come to you, in your house and light on your food or?
I know, have you been to Herbl? Have you drove around Herbl? What's Herbl, what can Herbl do about their problem?
Well, we live in novelty, so we're talking about that.
I know, what I'm saying is, we have the same problem that Herbl has, we can't do nothing about it because our judicial system is screwed up.
That's right, that's exactly right.
Well, let's start right here.
That's right.
We can write, we can write a letter.
Yes, you can.
Oh, yes, we can, and you know where, and you know where it goes? In their trash, we write another letter, it goes in their trash because we can't enforce it.
What?
Because we have no law.
Have you?
You fi- you find it, we'll use it.
I have the original books that started here in novelty.
Eighteen ninety-four?
And I think there is something in there about, yeah.
Well.
I'll look at that.
You look, you look that up and you take it to the sheriff and you see if he can do anything about it. Because we've already been there.
It's a heathen patsy.
You have to have a law, you have to have some sort of law to go to them people and serve papers to make it legal.
Has anybody, has anybody gone out, who, who are you serving the tape papers on, who owns it?
Right now, I mean, we just sent Perkins and all them letters too, Lonnie Golden.
Lonnie got a, a letter at the la- the last one.
Got nowhere, and now, uh.
Janice Cindy Garden.
Yeah.
Who?
Janice Cindy Garden.
Yep.
The lady that owns the place out here on A.
Oh.
She lives in Edina, I'm told.
You sure she's not back out here?
No, I'm not sure, I mean, I'm just going by what the.
She was living in the trailer by the ambulance district.
Well, who owns the, the house that you're talking about?
That's the same, the one.
Same one, okay, same one.
Yeah, and see, now we got a guy that's not mowing his yard, it's two feet tall in the middle of town. We can send him a letter, but that guy's not gonna respond to any letter, because we've already been around with him.
Does anybody on this board go out and talk to these people? When I was on this board, years ago, you can laugh, I had, we had dogs running around in town.
Yep.
And one animal was over there, well, it's there across from, on the corner there. Uh, from just east of the Townsend place, okay, there was a lady living there, she had a dog, the dog had pups and they were running on all the neighbor's garden and everything. I just went there and told her nicely, I said, you need to do something with your dog and your pups, I said, they don't need to be running here in town. I don't know what happened to all of them, but they disappeared, I didn't have any problems with her. Now, why can't some of you go and visit with these people?
I have.
What did they say?
And do what I got told?
What'd they say?
Get the F off my property, mind your own business.
Who'd you go talk to, Jim?
These people over here that has dogs running around town.
And the sheriff has been to several people's houses in the past.
Wait a minute.
Oh, what's her name?
Clark Blair.
Carrie Blair, Carrie Blair.
Who?
Carrie Blair, see, don't even know who lives in town.
She has, what, pit bulls, don't she?
No, she's got a great dane, she's got a black dog with a car that runs all over town.
Mm.
Have a German shepherd.
They have a German shepherd.
The pit bulls over at, uh, Stephen Prister's house.
Yeah.
But it's contained.
Yeah. He was threatened.
He was threatened.
By my stepdad.
Yep. And the sheriff's been there.
The sheriff's been too. The difference between forty years ago and now, people have changed.
You're right.
There, people ain't like they used to be.
You can't go on somebody else's property and, and ask them nicely because they won't do it.
No.
They get mad, if you send them a letter, they get mad.
Yep. It's totally different than used to be.
Lots of things change in thirty years.
Oh, yeah. And you used to. Yeah, and you used to, could, when I first moved here, you could go talk to whoever, say, hey, you know, your dog's running around town, can you keep him tied up?
Sure.
Now, they don't care.
No, they don't.
They don't, they don't tie him up.
They don't.
Okay, I guess I've got another question. I've asked Kent a couple of times, uh, what, if you ever got your twenty-seven thousand dollars last year? Yeah, last year. And at the time, Kent told me, no, they haven't got it.
That was before we got it.
So, did you get it?
Yeah, yes.
How much?
Twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-six cents.
Yep.
Twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and what?
Eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-six cents.
What'd you do with it?
It's in the bank, and we got this year to spend it, correct?
No. We have to, by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, you have to have a project, approved program, send it in, to, that's approved through the state.
Yeah.
And it has to be spent by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
And it doesn't have to be spent on one spot?
No.
No.
We have various projects.
If there's numerous projects that, that meet the criteria, and you, and you get it approved, but it has to be done before the end of next year, it's very limited. Yeah.
What, what about, uh, computer hardware and software?
I don't know.
For the updated sewer system?
I don't know anything about that.
We haven't real, we haven't real.
It's kind of a broad.
We don't know what, we can spend it on, what we can't, because we never have got a list from the state where it can be spent.
It's online.
You have to go online to see it.
Yeah, but you, we get the list, and then they change it in a month.
Broadband sewer or water.
Broadband sewer, you can't spend it on streets, uh, tech, which that could cover quite a bit, I guess.
Yeah.
Uh, that's what I want to understand about broadband.
Outdoor recreation.
Well, the paper publication is what you could use it on.
Oh, outdoor, outdoor recreation, the one?
The paper publication, I got it right there.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's online, I've, I've read it several times.
Yeah, what's it say it'll spend it on?
You can spend it on, uh, services like, let's see. Where is it? Oh, hmm, I didn't jump, there we go. Provide service that's equivalent to the amount of revenue loss due to the pandemic, and you can invest in improved materials, in water, sewer, or broadband, uh, and then all the C. Aid funds will be paid to the counties and municipal governments, and two installments, so did you get two installments?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, okay. Uh, well, if you can get the information, uh, as to what you can spend it on, then have you got a plan of any kind?
Not really, because they're changing everything all the time.
Well, why don't you give this in?
But we still have the same issues, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, what do we need to fix, and then go from that direction instead of.
We're kinda hoping that they would lift the stipulations a little bit, so we could actually do some stuff that, whether than just dig ditches out, or, I don't know, buy a computer.
Somebody needs to come.
Do we have a tentative list of things?
Somebody needs to come over and look at my, I guess it's a sewer line. Who's your man right there? Are you doing that?
Yeah, is it exposed?
I guess, something is.
It shouldn't be, where's that?
Well, come over and I'll show you.
Is it right next to the house?
No.
It's over, she'll show you.
It's, it's, uh, north of my garden there.
North of your garden?
Yeah. North and west, there's a little place, and I don't know what's going on with it, it's been there for two or three years. Do you ever check the, I guess it's what else you got going through town?
Well, there's water, I mean, sewer, where's that?
Well, it's one of it.
Where's it at? Where's it at?
Well, you know that tree that's dying?
Yes.
It's just missing that.
Want to go over it every time?
Yeah, no, you don't go over, you're all around it.
Probably not.
Back there in the penthouse.
It's down, no, it's just north of that penthouse, and it's down in.
What color is it?
What?
What color is it?
Well, I don't know.
Is that white pipe?
I'll go home and look. Come over and see, I'll show you.
Okay.
But it's been, I think it needs attention.
You'll have to show up.
Just, you get over there, and I'll show it to you.
It's north of your house.
Yes.
By the garden.
North of the garden.
West of the garden.
Yes, and it's on the north side of that fence that goes.
Is there like a fence post by it?
I think there's something.
Is there even a sewer line that goes down through that house? That's what I was thinking.
Right, there by the dead tree, and we got a fence posted.
There might be a sewer line going down through there.
Right, I don't think so. Before the hay field?
Because it goes down through, uh, there wouldn't be a sewer line that goes down through there.
The sewer lines from all the properties go along the street.
Yeah.
Well, what'd y'all do with all those maps that Junior had, that I gave to City?
They're probably in a cabinet.
Well, we don't know. What do you think I did?
We know where the sewer line here at, but there's no sewer line behind your house.
We just follow the sewer maps and know exactly where the sewer lines are.
The main's across the road from your house.
Well, I don't care, there's a pipe over there, and you can.
You got a basement, you got a basement drain?
What?
You got a basement drain?
No, not where they are.
Down the hole.
That's kinda weird if there's a, it's probably Marilyn's basement drain.
Oh, don't tell it to her.
Oh, the post office is cleared down by Rexes, on the, in the ditch down there.
No kidding? All those, all those buildings drained down on my property.
Yeah.
My town.
You know where it is?
Yeah, there's a fence post, I've never seen a pipe though.
Well, there's something there.
I always go over it, but I didn't know there's.
Rex will check it out.
I will check it out.
I'll look at it next time, I'm gonna.
As soon as I can get over there, it won't be tomorrow.
Okay.
Anything else?
Well, I, I was just, I was just kinda curious what happened to the money.
It's still, we still got her.
Well, why don't you go get busy and find out?
We need to.
And do something, you may lose it.
Justifications and things to ever get to that point. That takes a while.
Regulations.
It looks like it needs to be spent on the, to benefit the town, the whole town, not just the church.
Oh, I think so.
Or, you know. And that's the trouble, if you can't find.
A common denominator.
Well, one or two things that everybody's gonna be satisfied, because if it exists in the town, with storms or.
Yeah, the other end of town.
They don't need it, don't need it, but they're gonna say, well, why, why didn't we get something, you know, I mean, I can already see that coming.
It's just like the streets.
Yeah.
Why'd you do my street? Why'd you, why'd you do my street?
Well, I don't know if we'd use this money for streets.
No, not yet.
I wish we could.
That's right.
Because you could do all of them.
It'd be easy.
Yeah, we probably could, about surface all of it, if we done it ourselves, pretty close.
I, I, yeah, yeah. That was some suffering.
It is, and find out what you're gonna use it for, let's get a plan.
I'm just hoping they change it a little bit, because it's, somebody told me that they were changing some of the rules on it, so I'm hoping.
Well, is, where can you go to find out?
Well, have to look it up, go on the internet. Go on your computer and look it up.
I don't have it.
Oh.
I'll look it up, I'll tell you.
I probably, I'm not gonna get one.
No.
There you go.
It's probably all we save.
I suspect so. But anyway, move things along.
Well, we're, I'm about done.
Then, one other, on new business, a young gentleman approached me, church, was wondering about, uh, he was looking in novelty for like a storage, them shipping containers, it's, uh, once, or, uh, Justice Taylor, he had wanted to get brand new containers, so I'm using for like rental. And he said, his dad wanted to bring it up, run the board, and what he thought, and I, and I had suggested, I said, well, if you do that, you're gonna buy these properties. So, I don't know if, is it a, a no, maybe, do they need to come and present some, some ideas, or?
What's in the containers?
Nothing.
They're empty?
They're gonna, they're gonna put them together, they're gonna put them together, to storage units, and grab them out for storage units. They're all brand new containers, no paint, or, I mean, no graffiti on them, or nothing, they're all brand new shipping containers. But, and then I, I brought up, I said, well, you're gonna buy these properties. But I, I just said, he's not gonna buy them properly for me.
No.
Why they wanna do that?
He just, he's eyeing these cir- little towns, that our closest place is, dominant.
And we could use the remnants.
I mean, it's, I mean, it's front of us, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if they put sales taxes up.
He's a grand, put it on there, I mean, it's taxes for us, yeah.
Exactly.
But, I'm just saying that he wanted me to bring it up and ask if it was a, but, but he's, he's gonna have to buy these properties.
Yeah.
So, that's what I told his dad.
Yeah.
I said, that's the one thing that I, I know of right now.
Yeah.
So, I'll.
Too much liability, because of all the city.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
Well, there's that property behind me.
Yep.
Shipping containers for you.
Eight thousand dollars.
You want a bunch of shipping containers by you?
As long as there's nothing in them.
Well, if they rent.
I know, I get it, I know, they can rent by the most, and then.
I'm gonna take all those trees down, I'm gonna have them shaved back there.
We'll get a little bit of revenue from it, from the sales tax.
Yep. Around your shed, about around that old house.
Just about, yeah. I'm all for anybody wants to put anything, I mean.
Yes. Aren't those trees on that?
They're gonna have to be, they're property. I mean, pink cars, that's your, pink curtains? Yeah, that's money they're buying.
There's two of them, they're gonna be on there right now.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it.
They're your own shipping containers, you're gonna have to trade them.
Trial, but I said, you're gonna build a property, I said, City, I said, I'm all for it. Where's he gonna get looking, this, that?
Uh, yeah, several rounds around. They're like forty foot long, and they're just big round shipping. Rest handle again.
It's like a box trailer on a.
Yeah, on the train.
Yeah.
Boy, they're mouth tied.
But they're, but they're.
They're all steed.
Like, you see them on the highway from the player.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. That's where they're coming from.
Yeah.
Like, see a max train car going down the graffiti all over.
But these will, these will be brand new, yeah, so, I'll just, I'll, that's the touch base for the city.
Well, is that the only property that's available?
I don't want one of the graffiti.
Holy cow.
Much of talent going away, huh?
Exactly.
You know, I did know.
Actually, give him a job, give him a job.
I could buy that.
Seven, three, two. That's not what I'm asking for him now.
I don't think he wants your hate round now, you don't know what's gonna leave there.
Who, uh, we got a broke sign.
I was just.
Who wants to fix it?
I agree.
It's all, it has been there for.
It's just clawed in or something, or?
I'll fix it.
Kinda clawed?
It's metal, it's a metal sign that a guy painted and gave to the city.
No, it's not.
And it's got plexiglass on the outside, so.
It's a, it's a trip coil, so, yeah, and the guy painted it with Gilley, was on the board, and told, give him to Gilley, and said, give these to the city of novelty, to put up.
It's just the plexiglass that has to be replaced, I think, and I, I know pretty good.
I looked at it close enough, but.
I did, I looked at it today.
I was pretty screwed, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, the plexiglass is all curled, and the sign itself is a mess.
So, I, I'm not, I'm not able to do it.
Could you just be playing, uh, could you put that up, screws, or what?
No.
I have one, I'll put it, I'll see.
I don't, I don't know, I was gonna try to fix it, I'm gonna fly around, it's, uh, get a couple of those, go and look at it, see what it takes. Just a couple of those, go look at them, see what it's gonna take to fix it, and. But, but the, the, all the, all the lumber around the flower bed, it's, it's, it's just not going on both of them.
I would say that the two before is on the bottom, the bottom quarters, rock.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't.
They've been there for longer than we thought.
Gilley's on the board, had these, I don't know, seven or four.
And the town bought the boards, and me and Jerry put them together. Yeah, they did, that's something. I think it's funny.